Well, it's in the US. No, it didn't. That is, she's really pretty.
I have a call meeting. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To Republic, which stands on a nation. You as well. Personally, the agenda. Recommand, right? Good afternoon, boards. Good evening to you too. Uh, I am here. You might have got my handout from this old straight. When I'm, I'm requesting for Stark County Court Services. To utilize for calendar year twenty twenty four fifty thousand dollars. Of restricted funds from the opioid settlement. The reason for this request that would allow us to continue our services with Tim Gierhardt, who is a licensed clinical social worker. Uh, Tim meets specifically with individuals who have substance use disorders and mental health conditions. And they're all under some level of community supervision, probation or community corrections. So it's in alignment, I believe it's my understanding with the restricted funds. From the opioid settlement for treatment services. I've also attached a few documents for you to review and consideration as well. Uh, the first one, this, it shows his hat is hourly rate. And this is an estimate with him working eight hours a day. I, I put seven on there when I talked to Tim. He's currently working four hours a day, one day a week for us. But with the proposed recommendation, we can hopefully get his services for a full day. One day a week to continue to do work that he and his associate are doing to assist us with this very unique and challenging population. And then the second attachment is just basically an invoice from Gierhardt LLC. I know he bills the county and Miss Osprey is very good about making sure the Ts are crossing, the ads are dotted. So we already have a system in place for this. And lastly, my final third attachment. Is just specifically reference number five, when it talks about utilization of the opioid funding. Uh, as it states there for individuals that are currently on probation or parole or under community correction supervision. How we're funding Tim Gierhardt now, the, the prior two years, including this year, actually, it's being funded through the SIM grant. And the SIM grant is terminating at the end of this year. So the importance is paramount if we can continue to provide the services that we are to the individuals under our supervision. Uh, so again, I'm respectfully requesting the, the commissioners, you all entertain this and I can ask any questions, board may have.
Can you only go over it for the whole year?
Based on the funding, uh, breakdown, I had to provide Mr. Beasley, it was just south of fifty thousand dollars. I think it was forty eight thousand dollars. Uh, so yes, fifty thousand dollars should cover that. We don't pay for any insurance costs or anything of that nature. It's just billable service hours.
Rachel, do you have on, off the top of your head, how much we've received? In the, in restricted settlement funds?
Yes. So for restricted, so far we are coming into this year, our balance was two hundred and sixteen thousand. We received an additional forty two thousand from the state. We've spent fifty nine thousand five hundred dollars on block cameras so far. Our balance is one ninety nine, five seventy four.
And we're going to get, continue to get annual payments. The next, what sixteen years now?
That's supposed to be for.
Yeah, so I don't. You don't have to keep rolling and we won't, and this doesn't threaten to draw down the balance. So we can't do anything else. So yeah. Think this is a good use of those funds. I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of fifty thousand dollars for services.
Second.
All those in favor?
I don't know if Mr. Matron, this and I didn't speak to them, but I just wanted to let you know too that, um, the health like grant for the social worker I did. Uh, through the sheriff has mentioned, maybe Mr. Gerdart might want that, but he declined on that. So we do have the. Possibility of filling that position to the social worker of the helping grant.
Right.
Well, thank you.
And that's. Mr. Gerdart's a clinical social worker and that we can go as down as far as, um, just a light LSW licensing.
They, they hope it's going to be somebody with a master, but yeah, because somebody who's licensed and working.
Both, both licenses require master's, one is clinic license and one is not.
Yeah, you're right. It could be the one. I mean, I was just saying that was the main thing, which is one of those that was an extra position.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioners, Members.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
I may have forgot to put you on agenda, but I did hand out all the stuff.
You did. That was very kind of you. You're a busy woman. I appreciate you getting me there. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Um, we have Daryl is on the Zoom from Lenko. If you gentlemen have any questions, I think we've been able to work this out. Um, as far as the. Chassis. Uh, you know, trucks. The price is guaranteed if the chassis is paid within thirty days of being delivered to Lenko. Is that what we were worried about? Uh, the last meeting was. Making sure the prices are locked in. So there's no surprises. Okay. So we've got that figured out. The price is guaranteed that the chassis is paid for within thirty days of being delivered. On the build portion of the truck. Um, on the second page. Of the big one. Um, option number one. Guaranteed equipment pricing is locked in. If we pay for the equipment within thirty days of the purchase order. There and stuff, anyone on this page? Um, no, okay. That is for the financing. Okay. Option two, uh, for the equipment would be. We don't want option two on that. Option one locks in the price.
We, and we've got anything in place, we can move on option one in here?
Um, yeah, he, uh.
I talked with Republic and she'll cut two checks to Lenko.
Are you still, when we get the build date on?
Yes. Yes. So we're hoping, um, on the quote, they're saying. Like thirty days.
So they come up with thirty one or two, that's not our fault. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's not a problem.
When's the build date then?
Um. You have a build date? Has Dustin?
I don't, uh, I know he was telling me, which you know, they never give you a perfectly accurate date anymore, but he was thinking sometime end of October. So end of this month. Uh, he was expecting both of those chassis to arrive. And then for us, we have to order the equipment and typically hydraulics are your longest lead time to get. So you're looking at. About six months to get hydraulics in. So your estimated completion on both units would be before next winter of twenty twenty four. Which hopefully you're getting four trucks then, because we got the two that are already on order too. So hopefully those get built and we could get those ones built out for you guys as well.
I just don't want to be in behind just like the first two. You've been like two years waiting on them or something.
Yeah, that, that, yeah. And that's, that's our chassis manufacturer, which truly if. If it weren't for this opportunity to get these two trucks, we would unfortunately be in the same situation again, where we'd be waiting. Two years and probably incurring price increases that we wouldn't even know what they'd be. So this definitely was a pretty. Wanted, I feel like a pretty rare opportunity, honestly, because trucks just don't pop up nowadays.
Do you think six months, eight months then?
Yeah, by the time we get the equipment in, so, um, so we'll work on a, what we'll do right away and I'll be able to let you guys know within, uh. Right shortly after the chassis's arrive is approximate build timeframe on our end, because we'll look at. All the equipment will get ordered when you guys give us the okay. And then from that time, we'll look at when we'll expect all equipment and then be able to place in our schedule and give you a better idea on exact timeframe for the build.
I'll be okay with a build date. I mean, I would go ahead with it and, uh. In thirty days, you know, whatever is gone, you can give us a build date.
Oh, yeah, we, we'll be able to as soon as we get the truck in and we'll get it into our schedule, because we'll look at when is the, all the equipment going in and we. As far as, or when it's going to come in, and then from there we look at a schedule and it's. Going to be scheduled based on when that equipment comes in, because the truck will be there already. So that's the good thing. We won't be waiting on a truck in this scenario.
This, to me, this is the key line here for this guarantee. Right. Regardless of the actual date. We are going, we are definitely going to have.
That is a fact.
And the payment in. Then a month of delivery. So we, we're locked in there. Correct. And then. And go on with option one. We should be fine. It shouldn't be a surprise. Once you have any other questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the quote for the. Chassis and the, um, option one of the quote for the. All in favor? Alright.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Dylan, do we need to go? Do anything with this?
On that, um, option two is what's going to fit the agreement with that. Okay, we'll start paying.
Though, and this is separate than the one, the, the option we chose out of the three in our previous meeting, that was for a different.
Yes.
Like, that's all right. I'll entertain a motion to go with option two on the Republic financing.
Absolutely.
All of them favored?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
You too.
Mister Surveyor. Give me another, but it's really. Okay, we're here just to make a. Uh, a technical name change. From deputy clerk, which is her title now to deputy surveyor. And you can see the. Just, you know, what she, her job description is, is quite long. And she does help me in the field occasionally when I need it.
You're wanting to change it.
Just make, no, no money, no. Nothing, uh, just, uh, from deputy clerk to deputy surveyor.
Well, as long as we're changing. Job description. There's one line I like to add to the bottom of every job description. It's just to catch all, all other duties as assigned. There you go. Think we've got that on most of them now.
Does that have that on there or not?
No.
No, so they need to update that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That position already exists in the salary orders.
Yes.
Yes, it's just a rename.
I don't know why it was named. I, I don't know. That, that's from years and years and years.
And was clerk instead of surveyor, deputy surveyor.
We're just keeping up with all the other, all the other deputies within the county that. Belong to the different.
Modernization of your.
Yes.
By changing it to deputy surveyor, it doesn't trigger any required salary like it does with surveyor?
No, he, the surveyor's office is a constitutional office, just like the other, our other offices. I don't know why it wasn't deputy surveyor.
Just making sure that we didn't.
Yeah. No, no money in great, whatever, in research.
What do you want? Oh, are you going to make a motion?
All other, all other duties as assigned.
It's, I'll make, I'll make a motion to. Uh, make the discussed changes to. Uh, uh, to the title deputy surveyor.
Along with it. Uh, second.
All those in favor?
So Tom, I want an official copy of that for my office after you changed, after you've added and all of the meetings.
Okay.
Then I will file that.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen.
Yep. Alright. I'll entertain a motion for vendor claims in the amount of one hundred and seventy six thousand nine hundred and sixty six dollars and eighty four cents. Second. All in favor? Alright, hey. We'll entertain a motion to approve the payroll claims in the amount of. Two hundred and ninety one thousand six hundred and three dollars and sixty two cents. So second. All in favor?
Next, a discussion on the second floor remodeling.
Well, I just wanted to bring up that, um. See, maybe the radio will put it on there that we still look for something to do.
Okay, so, but we got, we're still see, seeking.
Busy morning here.
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Um, then we have the. California Township Advisory Board appointment. Believe I did get, um. Notice, did you get contacted by? Republican Party Chair? He sent me a note and we discussed it with Charlie. They did, uh. They did go through a process, came up with the name of Leslie Kraft. You have a. Like that motion. Motion, uh, second motion to point Leslie Kraft to the. California Township Advisory Board are, are all in favor? Rachel, do you have anything else for us this evening?
Why do you want? Very surprised, right?
Yeah, well, I mean.
You know what, there's so.
It's, 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 it's helpful, helpful when you're out of the office for a week, I guess.
Oh, they're very, very well tonight.
Any, uh, further business from the public? Yes.
Uh, I'd like to know where we're at the joint meeting as to the planning.
I, I haven't, we haven't said, no, we're back on.
It's been a month. I'd just like to reiterate, we would like moratorium and so this can be figured out.
Yeah.
I have two quick things for you. Number one, just, uh, for the commissioners, I mean, Mark's the rep on the, uh, LEPC and the Communications Committee, but.
How'd that go Saturday?
We did have our exercise Saturday. It went very well. We saw some opportunities for learning just like we wanted to have out of it. Um, staffing was probably the biggest issue that we realized that in an event like that. Gave us a chance to further a pre, a pre-planned for one of our commercial entities. I mean, Oxford advisor is one of the bigger ones and still we're up. We did, we had a lot of learning. I think we. We usually start planning the exercise sort of like the very beginning of the year, our first LEPC meeting, we start getting the nuts and bolts and start getting everybody's thoughts and things going. IDHS was there and I did get feedback from them in the Marshals office that they were depressed with the exercise and the way it was planned. So, um, it went well. Um, went out to a meeting at Fast Lake, actually, immediately after that too, and talked a little about some of the. IVFA's bringing up the things about, um, public safety lit and whatnot. And I gave some feedback from our side since we don't have a public safety lit, but some discussion is kind of our. County is funded and things like that. I think the IVFA guy was appreciative of it and I'm glad they're thinking about. What we need in, in counties, small counties in the future. I mean, for us, it's not even so much as a, as a, um. Money thing as it is a staffing thing. Like we just were short on personnel. Nobody's really doing fundraisers anymore right now, at least, and. You know, things are going to, equipment wise, but just not enough staff. So a lot of fire departments are running, you know, daytime together, you know, things like that. So. Um, the second thing was, is that we had a meeting with NIPSCO the other day. So, um, for, uh, the knowledge of the CAPS, uh, group. Um, I will tell you that there was a few questions that you asked that you wanted me to try to explore as well. Um, as far as the coal plants, um, uh, you know, rolling out of use. Twenty twenty five, that's a reality. Like whoever's telling you guys that that's being extended, and the EPA is the one that's, that's mandating that. So it will, it will discontinue. So if there isn't an alternative. Then consumers will have to buy the power from the grid. You know, if there isn't a project like this to replace some of that.
That's those, NIPSCO's own website was stating twenty twenty eight.
Uh, actually, there's three, yeah, there's three plot power plants. So I'm, I thought we were mainly focusing on the one that was. Feeling with this one, it's, but, um, this one is twenty twenty five. So there's three, there's three total. Um, the other thing was, is that your group had asked for a cutaway of the panel. I can get that. I just don't know if we can keep it. But I didn't know if you wanted to like get together and like pour some water on it, collect it. Brian, I, I messaged Brian that. Because I've been asking different ones and we haven't been able to do it. But now I actually, even the other ones said they might even be able to get a broken panel. But at least if I can get this cutaway through NIPSCO, you, uh, Brian had said that he would pay for third party testing. So. Do you still want to get together and do that if I can get that cutaway?
Yeah, Brian, I believe he said he had a lab and everything.
Yeah, right. So I did text Brian about it and I, I might have messaged on Facebook, but I did let him know that they're willing to do that. So I'll, I'll get with you guys and let you know that. Um, and, uh, they, they also, you know, we spoke a lot about, you know, just the lack of communication. Um, and you know, just a, a really a lack of the perception of what things are going to look like that's done, especially like what does the finished fence area look like, things like that. I've asked them a few times, like if they could produce something more with that. I got an email back about it that said. They're working on that part of it, but they. I don't know if they can accommodate your whole group. I don't know how many that are in it, but you know, you are, I think are kind of the leader of it. Um, and maybe, you know, some of the other folks that are more, uh, readily involved, but they're inviting you, uh, to a tour of all these of, of what's there. So you can see what it, you know, what it is. Are you interested in that? I asked Lisa, I think Lisa's going to reach out to you. I, I don't know if she's waiting for me to do it. I just wanted to bring it up that. That is being offered to your group as well. So we're, we're trying to at least, you know, kind of meet half land, some of the stuff that we can. So.
Yeah. Yeah.
With this cutaway solar panel, will, will, will the manufacturer's identification plate be part of that sample?
Um, you know what? I'll ask them if they can make sure that that's.
Because I think any testing without it is pointless.
Okay, let me, let me make sure that that's, that, you know, that's available. Um. If not, maybe I can get a certificate of authentication or analysis or something to say that it was because I just don't know if that, where that. I can't remember. I've seen where that serial plate is located, but I don't know if it was a cutaway, if it would be included in the cut, but I'll see if we can do that.
Because otherwise, if you don't know who made it, I mean, what good is it? Panel might be twenty years old. It might be manufactured yesterday.
Yeah, well, there's only three manufacturers. Um, they're made, they're all spec with the same build and the same material, but there's three potential manufacturers. One of the, one of the issues with that has been. Is that in the panel manufacturing, it, the United States goes to a pretty, uh, heavy length to try to make sure that they're not utilizing like. Children and you know, like, I don't know if there's child, other things like that though, but that they're following our guidelines for, um. Staffing and things like that. So.
Yeah, and that, and that's what brings up my concern is that there has been a lot of underhand, under, underhanded dealings. Trying to get Chinese made products into the United States and they've been getting stopped at the border with their goods.
Yeah, well, um, I, I don't know at this scale, like a lot of that's going on with like residential panels that you're talking about, like these panels that these guys order, it's a massive order at one time. So it's not just like. One container coming in. It's a whole barge with containers on it. So.
My understanding, it wasn't necessarily only home. Panels, it was panels that sold institutions needed for their completion of their projects.
I haven't heard that about this project, but, um, so the other thing is, is that one of the things that they did kind of talk high level and I said. You know, why don't we just see how you guys felt about it? They are, they are willing to have a NIPSCO community meeting. If that's something that interests you. So think about it. Uh, and maybe that can be planned. I mean, you know, the goal would be not to have big fight, but you know, I kind of sit down and say, hey, how can we live together? You know what I mean? You know, and, and better, uh, you know, just. You know, just be better neighbors, I guess, how they can be a better neighbor. So.
I think the best way to live together is for one. Didn't say it, but I think we need to. Messiah or our ordinances. Get that done.
Well, I will speak to that. The main thing is we haven't, we have an ordinance that's set and you know, it was, it was done by a lot of professionals, a lot of people involved, a lot of engineers. I mean. They're able to have, you know, laypeople come and say that you're going to change the ordinance. I mean. These people that are doing the projects probably aren't going to be accepting that, you know what I mean? Like they, they have accepted something, but I don't know, that has to be seen, but. As far as the relationships concerned, though, they are interested in you guys and, and, you know, taking off some of the things on my list and check. So if there are other things you want me to. Talk to them about, I'm very happy to do that. Um, I, I, I don't know a lot of additional information about. At least as far as that, that's a full NIPSCO project.
That's next era. That's all NIPSCO, right?
Yes.
Is Hoosier part of NIPSCO or no?
Pardon me?
Is the Hoosier project?
It's right. As far as I'm aware, the only, uh, NIPSCO project is the, the build operate transfer that next year is doing.
Okay. Yeah. Um, the, uh. The Mammoth project so far, as far as I know, is just going to go straight to the MISO grid. Um, but what I will say too is that there is a consistency between all three companies. There is a maximum amount of power that's coming out of Stark County like that, that what you keep being told about. At least trying to quell some of your concerns about this massive additional growth in panels. It's just not going to happen. Like it's just not foreseeable. And that's who says that, Exterra says that, Mammoth says that. I believe Larry has iterated the same thing. So if there's any solace in all of this that's going on, it's just. The physical need for it, for the grid to ever be able to pull or need to pull that much power from just this one concentrated area. It's, it's not going to happen. And you know, I can get, I can ask NIPSCO, if they do have a public meeting to elaborate more on that. That way it's not coming from. Now, I'm not saying you don't trust county government, but it's nice to hear from multiple people. That way it's not coming from Exterra. It's going to be coming from the company that's going to be providing you with the energy and part, and, and it's going to be the existing. Person that's on site. The other thing, Dan, too, is, um. The amount of jobs that are actually going to be involved in that and sustenance are more than what we thought too. I mean. I don't know how many are going to be Stark County versus Jasper County. But I mean, there was a lot of great things about it too, like, um, we learned that the wages. Um, like the people that do stay, their, their union. And instead of like going back to like the pay scale of, of NIPSCO, like they've already negotiated that they'll carry forward with, with, um. With that pay, I thought that was really great for the ones that are staying. I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the technician type people, they want to move with the projects because they get a higher pay scale if they go to the next solar project or wind, whatever they're working for, but. You know, instead of staying here, like the ones that stay, it sounds like they're going to have a pretty good, you know, it's. A pretty good package too, and maybe it'll offset some of the people that are going to lose jobs because of the coal plant.
I do have a question. It's the, um. And I, I just don't know, is the next era lined up to be a connected to the grid? Because last we know, there was like a five year waitlist even be connected to the grid. So I'm real curious how that.
Twenty, uh, December of twenty twenty four, it'll actually start per, uh, pumping the, the beginning part of that. That's what they said, right? December twenty twenty four was. That was the deadline. It'll happen before that. It'll happen in December, but the, the drop dead day for it to, to fire up and be connected to the grid is December twenty twenty four.
And that's for next era?
That's for next era. Yeah. I, I don't know about Mammoth yet, but as soon as.
Mammoth has their, they have their agreement with me. So the only one that I can't find anywhere is Hoosier. They have no pending. Anything with any of the grids.
Well, I think, at least last time with when Christina spoke, she said that they were kind of slowing things down a little bit. So that's, you know, probably a part of what's.
You want me to say something today that? Hoosier has requests in. For connections. If you don't see it there, it's not under the name Hoosier. I'm not exactly sure where it began there. But, uh, I can find that out.
If you can, I wonder.
No. The, we have, uh. Three places we're asking for connections. One of them is on the MISO line right north of Toto Road goes this way. You know where Toto Road is?
Yeah.
Just north of.
Back here.
Okay. And then there, there's a line just off of thirty five ways goes north and south. That's a PJM. Those are different entities that you have to make requests for, for the lines they control. And we have a request in with them. And then we have another request in with the MISO line that's north of Stark County. Our hope is to. Be able to move. Electricity from Stark County to that one. I don't think the hardest thing to do is put up a transmission line. So we may not do that. We may ask for another application to PJM. The problem with that. Mammoth is putting all theirs into that PJM line, and it's already pretty much done and full, so we may not be able to put a second, we may end up with just one project, we may end up with two, we're hoping we can do three, but we've got applications in place, yeah.
Yeah, if you can give me the name, because I couldn't find the apps, and I know that they said, any apps that weren't in as of, when I was looking, yeah, they were looking at, you know, six years before they could even.
Get something.
Do I have?
Yeah.
Um, no, I don't, but I can give a chance.
Just right now.
Is that all there?
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
Thank you. So I just heard you, Dave, when you were saying that about the ordinance, are you implying that you would, when you're talking about all the engineers and all these other people that did it, versus the laypeople, are you saying that this would have to be approved by the solar companies?
Uh, actually.
That in, or I'm, I'm just a little.
I was trying to do two things, I was just trying to say that I don't have authority to tell them, you know, I'm only just speaking from my knowledge of being part of government, what I was saying was, is that these projects are in place, and these, the, the projects, they're not going to change it. Um, but, we talked about before about how our county opted on to an ordinance, and what I was, when I was speaking about engineers was, is we had engineers involved, we had people on our boards that have experience with projects, um, we went to other counties and pulled what, what they were doing, and then, you know, also information from the solar companies as well, so a lot went into planning that. Um, and I will tell you that, you know, just generally, just for your knowledge, when government entities, um, commit to something, and they, they build something like an ordinance, they commit to it, they open themselves up to vulnerability and liability when they go on back. And so, i- it's, that's why on the front end, um, I feel like we put a lot of work into trying to make a product that was a good product, being that ordinance, and I commend the commissioners for that, um, we, we were just, um, at a state meeting last week, it's called the Association of Indiana Counties, there were nine hundred and sixty elected officials there, um, and some of us from each county went there, and one of the things that, that was the big discussion was solar, because there are other counties, because of the grid, and how, how much you can give in certain areas, there's other areas that are looking at it, and I think your group has done a really good job of pointing that out, too, there's a lot of counties that just said, we're not going to do it, I mean, especially the ones that had money, um, you know, that has happened, but then there's other counties that they're interested in, um, for multiple reasons, for the economic development money, because they want to be part of green energy, there's a lot of other things, you know, there are counties that want to do it as well, but I will say that I did see a few people that said, we've seen your ordinance, and we think Stark County has done a pretty good job with, with setting up solar, so again, I, I commend you guys for that, um, and, and, uh, a lot of people that, you know, Dan, our planning commission, things like that, but, you know, I, I know there's some things you're not happy with, but I do want you to know, there were a lot of people involved in this, in the planning process, but it just, you know.
Let me just say, we got Jasper County ordinance to rebuild ours off of theirs, they built theirs off of Shelby County, so there's at least three counties that have worked on this particular, uh, set of rules, and it's kind of been passed around, so it's, there's been a lot of thought put in it, in all the communities that, that worked on it at those times, had two interests, one is, let's take care of our local citizens, make sure things fit for that, at the same time, let's make it so that it's not over vertisim that, uh, a, a company can't, can't do their project here.
Well, and, and, you know, there's just a limit on that, you know, but there were things that were discussed in other counties, and the people were talking to me about, like setbacks. Um, believe it or not, there's a lot of people that thought, having that, having it set back that far, that it made it look worse, that it looked more natural, it was closer to the road, and then you build trees in front of it, and it looks like there's a forest right next to the road, apparently, is, is what a lot of people come back and said. In some cases, some counties are looking at things where they're going to encourage more farming in that swath, whether, however wide it ends up being, finding something there, hay, corn beans, I don't know, something.
That, that's just ever, you know, that only during the growing.
So, I, I want to add, you mentioned ordinance is hard to change, and, yeah, we've done it, right, we've already changed them more than once. So we didn't create it, never make any changes, we made changes, we have two ordinances already for solar, we have the first one.
We have the first one.
We had a second one to be made changes to, so it's not impossible to make changes, to my point. Mammoth had already been started at that point, so next era, and I think so, next era, so Hoosier falls into the second one. But again, what we're looking for, we said it pretty clearly, we understand these projects that have started, we can't stop, we get that, right? But what we can do is create new ordinances for anything new, moving forward outside of those projects, so that's one thing. And then, you know, you talked about the ordinance, and I'm just going to say this, because it's been eating at me since that meeting, and that is, when we did change the ordinance, we changed it from a hundred, well, two hundred feet from the foundation to fifty feet, and.
No, fifty feet from the roadway.
No, the foundation.
No.
Both, both.
Second ordinance didn't descend foot from the roadway.
Right, but it's also, it's also the thing, and what we heard from the planning department was, well, we had to do that because we can't get on their property. I'm going to call BS, because every single property in this county has a plaque that you can look at and see exactly where my foundation is from the property line, so to change it to fifty because they couldn't go on people's property, eh, no. That makes sense.
Well, it, it used to be the foundation, and it changed the, or, it was flipped from property line to foundation or something.
They shortened that up.
Foundation to property line, but there's, there's a concern that, um, they couldn't get, there may be instances where the, uh, whoever inspector couldn't get permission to go on to the property to verify.
Yeah, I think those had a concern about that.
Right, right, and the problem that I have with that is, again, you don't really need to be on my property, you can just look at a drawing of my property, then tax on it, or you, it'll show you exactly, I mean, just saying, I'm just making.
In theory, yes, but, but for something like this, it would need a physical verification of the measurement, and, uh, because it would be nice if we could be sure that there were absolutely no errors ever included in the new plan at any time.
Gotcha. But, so, I mean, we still need that. I have one other subject, I was saying solar. What can we do about Five Star? I'm so tired of going into that frigging grocery store and seeing rotten mold, and, I don't know how they're passing health, I'm hearing that they don't really pass their health inspections, and that the reality is that they're the only grocery store we have, I cannot go in that store any day of the week and not find rotten, nasty.
And then they take it and they put it in the sale.
Put it in the for sale.
But it's okay.
I have, I, I, I have to find my pictures of cauliflower, where they cut the moldy stuff off, rewrapped it, and there was still moldy stuff.
If you have, uh, some of those can help.
To the health department, okay, I mean, because I know people have gone to the health department with no, no luck, and, and I just don't, I mean, I get it, we have one grocery store, but, come on. It's, somebody's going to get sick, it's disgusting.
That, that will be an area that gets addressed with the, uh, um, funding that we have to do for public health.
Okay, good. And just in general, it's, it's, just so, you know, we, we, um, well, Mark and I actually sit on that Economic Development Board, it's always up on the list, I mean, we want to try to encourage either improvement there or something new or both. Um, now, I haven't been to, into a lot of them, but apparently Dollar General's very produce, too, and maybe some of that isn't too bad, so maybe that.
No, theirs is better.
I should say.
Start any day of the week for produce, I mean, I typically don't go there for produce at all, I go, when the farms are open, I'm going to go there, but Dollar General's better than.
So maybe, just from a competitive nature, maybe they'll see the light, and they'll, they'll see their sales going down and produce, but we'd like to see a, a, another brand.
It's the meat, too.
We, we talk about it all the time, so.
And, yeah, their meat is just great, it's disgusting, it's gross, okay, just throwing that out there.
You did find something, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, same.
So, a couple weeks ago, Don and I met with the sheriff about lots of issues, um, but one that we agreed upon was, uh, we want to change the handbook to say that the sheriff's department, um, whatever their schedule is, they get a paid.
Okay. Because you can't have the sheriff's department out there on a call. Right.
It's just, it'd be easier flow of everything.
Yeah, does the sheriff has, uh, department have its own addendum specific to his department on there?
They have SOPs, but, um, they are, they have their own SOPs, but they're, they are in our handbook.
Right, well, yeah, I mean, you got the base handbook, and then, I think there's a, a mechanism for at least their department, maybe one or two others to have department-specific addendums to the handbook.
Do they clock out now?
No.
No.
Then why does it, why, what does it matter, we banned out for their law.
Right.
Well.
It's, it's a, it's a, it sounds like it's a um, another case where we need to alter the language to reflect the practice.
Well, I got you, but I mean, we always have to be careful with the sheriff's department, it's difficult, especially if it's married officers, I mean, then down the road, I just don't want to get sued that says, oh, you promised they were going to have an out raw for lunch, and now they've got twenty seven hours banked up because they didn't get their lunch break.
Right.
Just be careful of that, like.
Well, that's what we're trying to get at, Stan.
Yeah.
Where they, right now, they don't have a paid lunch, so they don't get that, they could be banking up those hours. So we want it to be a paid lunch, we don't.
Put it in writing.
So, all right, so, how time for, like, how are they going to do that? What happens if they don't get their lunch?
They still get paid for it. Yeah, it's.
It's a paid.
It's going to say that, and that's changed, too.
Paid lunch. Right now, they don't get a paid lunch, so if they work through their lunch, they could be banking up the couple hours that are non-existent, because we don't have contact. But that could happen, we're trying to.
You've already run this by Justin, just to make sure that that doesn't make us vulnerable.
But she will.
Are they hungry to yourselves?
This makes me nervous in the, uh.
Yeah, I remember the discussion. And HR. You know, some there's, we can do, and then we can.
Is yours hourly or salary?
That's for Harley.
Okay. Then, yeah, it needs to be very clearly written, EEOC guidelines.
Yes.
Mail.
Are you good with that? I'm good with that, yeah, absolutely, um. Here, put it back on the, yeah. Any other business, of course?
I just have a question, you, you mentioned about potential liability if we change the ordinance. It says that the ordinance wouldn't affect the solar companies that are here presently. Where would you envision this liability suit being brought by who?
I, I, well, I'll, I'll take this one, this, uh, we've seen it, that's, and, and this is part of why it's a process, it's going to take longer than some people want it. Uh, we want to ensure that we don't see the same legal challenges that were seen in Pulaski County from any new entities trying to come into the county.
There are no lawsuits happening in Pulaski County, other than from the anti-solar. There has not been, I looked into it, there has not been a single lawsuit from any solar organization outside of one town, Grandview, and that was because the town said that they could put their field in the county's property, that is the only lawsuit in Indiana. Not even any litigations in Pulaski County, the only, the only thing in Pulaski County is a potential litigation from anti-solar people, but that's not, that's completely different, so, yeah.
Mark, there is one more thing about Chris Whitty. Okay, um, we obviously have another commissioner's meeting before our council, but we're going to have to lay out a plan, uh, he hasn't answered my email, you saw my response to him, I don't know if you, I don't know if you want to share that with the commissioners at this point, but, I mean, I think I outlined really well what, what our issues are again, but I think we're going to have to hopefully he answers, and we'll see from there how we're going to appropriate looking forward, I still have some, I still have some concerns. Most people that I talk to are saying that we're getting poor service from them. They eliminate, or two factor, and our security features, and when I, when I was at the meeting, a big thing, and, and Mark, too, cybersecurity, and, you know, we, we made such a big deal about moving forward with that, and we're stepping back with the current features that we have. Um, and then, while I was there, also met some different IT companies, and I learned that we're getting quite, charged twice as much as really what we should be, um, and then, you know, not having the features there, and then I also met this, uh, consortium, which I was talking to Justin, one of them, uh, is, I, he's either from Pulaski County, but, you know, he gave me some pretty good advice, too, I emailed them today, they haven't responded, but I just wanted to say that the next meetings, between now and then, we'll have to make some kind of a deal with them as far as doing it, then we'll have to get appropriation set up to discuss your next commissioners meeting, if that's sorted out, otherwise, could be problems.
I'll entertain a motion.